The planned urban unit development review request.
I don't have very much on that. I know Mayor Wile mentioned that at the last planning commission meeting as well.
Yeah.
But the concern, my understanding at the council level, would be in using the PUD process in situations to intensify use in our R1 zones where you could create duplexes or multi-unit because the PUD variance process or the PUD requirements allow you to do that. And there's a few council members who are concerned that we could see that process being used as an end around our zoning code. I don't know exactly what they would like from the planning commission. I think council is eager to move on that pretty soon. So if there's any comments from the planning commission or concerns about it, I think they would just like to hear what you guys have to say.
Right.
Hold on a second. So I got it down here.
So I mean, yeah, I won't put words in your mouth until you.
Okay, I'm trying to find it. Okay, 10611. I believe it's what, no, it's in Hickory Street.
Well, she discussed it today. Did they bring it forward for frustrating?
I've had it up already.
I don't think they moved forward with it.
Are you sure? Because I thought I saw something in there. Let me double check. The basic thrust of this is that fact that you can put a plan unit development almost anywhere in the city and therefore they are concerned about that.
And we have.
It sort of goes, I mean, there's things we could do where we could probably put a, you know, I guess within the PUD ordinance or section, I should say, the ordinance, that, you know, whatever zone it's in, it can't, we're not really, within the zoning even is about densities other than single family. We don't say lot sizes. Well, there's setbacks, I guess.
Yes. Well, but the PUD process allows for flexibility with setbacks as well. The Hickory Street project is kind of what triggered this and my understanding is I think most people think that the Hickory project is fine. It's a unique situation there where you've got an R1 zone, but it abuts a B2.
Right.
B3, I think.
Yeah, I think B3 along Richland, right? This is the one.
B2, that.
Yeah.
It abuts a B2. It's on a hillside. The remaining R1s are up a hill. It's also at a dead end. And so from there, the impact is very minimal, if anything, to an R1. But I think the concern would be is if people are trying to pop in something identical to that in nature in the middle of, you know, Elmwood or Sunnyside or any of Central Avenue or Jacob's or anywhere else.
Right.
And so my recommendation to council, I think, would just be to keep it very simple and prohibit anything but R1, single-family residential uses for a PUD in an R1 zone.
But that would change even the Hickory development.
Yes.
It would have, yeah. But again, that, there is, do we need to have flexibility with the edges where?
Yeah, see, that's what Jason sees, I think.
I have seen a draft come across my desk. It's not in the agenda. And part of the thing that talks about single-family housing, PUDs in an R1 zone. I don't know why you'd want to do that. But what it does, it presents another impediment to just dropping, you know, multifamily housing in an R1 zone.
Right.
So anything we do would have to require that as a variance for a PUD and they'd have to approve it as a variance.
No, I thought her language was prohibited.
If you prohibit, I don't believe you have grounds to ask for a variance.
That's what I, yeah. So I think that's what she wanted us to discuss and I apologize. We don't have copies of the proposed ordinance in front of us.
Yeah, but again, I would like to see some sort of, like, condition where if there's an adjacency, I mean, such as like the Hickory where it's right on a B2, it does seem like it's, and it's, yeah, I mean, I guess that's the nice thing about a PUD is there is that flexibility. I mean, the planning commission can still deny the PUD in a sense.
Right.
You know.
Our city council as well, right. So it does put a lot of eyes on the process.
Right.
So I'm just not sure how.
Right. I mean, it's the same thing that we do with, like, Title 41, for example.
Correct.
You know, it just puts more eyes on the process than what typically would have occurred.
But in this case with that Title 41, you know, there's, there's more, in a PUD, there's more places to stop.
Right. I get, yeah, I couldn't see the planning commission seeing a PUD in the middle of a R1, single-family and saying, yeah, this makes sense, the multifamily. All right, what's, until we can figure out where, I mean, it sounds like we've got a pretty good sense of what the city council wants us to look at, but we should just wait to see what they.
I did see it coming across my desk, but I didn't think it was coming up that quickly.
Okay. Let's hold, will table discussion until the next meeting or probably by then we'll have some more information.
And realize, of course, this is Title 41, 21, which is out of our purview as a planning commission, but they do want us to look at it. Maybe we'll get, if I get an electron copy of this, Paul, you can probably send it out, I think, if we could.
Yeah.
I seem to recall seeing a draft. I don't remember where and when. I apologize for not being ready on that.
They just want our input, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have to think about what it means to do something like this because it will restrict what you want to see there and it almost make no reason to have a plan unit development in an R1.
And I was just speaking with Paul. What about projects like fee simple condos that would be in an R1? You know, you've got, well, appropriate example would be Altamont or something of that nature where you've got into the, you know, it's an end around a multifamily, possibly even other individually owned buildings. You have a lot of homes on one parcel. So, I mean, I think we need to look at that, too. That's just occurring to me. Madison Heights was the one I was thinking of, but Paul's telling me he believes that's in a B and he might be correct.
It's a B1.
B1.
On the other hand, you look at something like Harold Avenue. I don't think, what was that?
That's a B as well.
That's a B as well here.
Yeah.
B3.
B3 over there. But perfectly one with another lane, Westfield projects like that.
Yeah.
Those are fee simple. Altamont is another one. So where that could become, you know.
Could be, it could be written to address that. So if you're doing fee simple or condominium project, it might be, it might be permitted in an R1. But if it's for multi-unit rental, then it would be prohibited. That's one way to look at it.
Well, how would you restrict that? I mean.
People, yeah, safer street apartments, people, they're all fee simple, but yet they rent them out. So, I mean, another lane, half of that's rented out.
That's about University Commons.
University Commons.
Yeah, University Commons.
Do you have a copy, right?
Sorry.
No, that's okay. I don't apologize.
All right, we'll continue to discuss.
Okay, let's see. Uses permitted in a PUD. Residential, commercial, manufacturing, public, quasi-public use. I don't know if it's a quasi-public thing going on. May be combined in a PUD provided that the proposed location of the commercial residential facilities will not adversely impact the adjacent property or the public health and safety, general welfare. Location such uses as specified in the flat, on the plan. Only single-family residents are permitted in an R1 zone. That's the only change right there.
Yeah, but that's right where I was saying. A condo is a single-family residence.
That's what, yeah.
You can put 20 condos together and you're still getting around this.
Well, it's not, I don't know, is it, could it, only single-family, only one single-family residence per lot?
One person can buy the entire condo building and they re, all held fee simple by one person, then he runs them out.
Again, any home can be a rental.
Yeah, the rental is about as much as the.
Making a multifamily project in an R1 still.
I think it's a question of, you know, the intent of the R1 zone is to have single-family residential.
Right.
It's, you could probably argue it's not to have, you know, a condominium. You could have townhouse condos, but.
Right.
Single-family residential in the same way. They're not three bedrooms, bath and a half with separate walls from your neighbors and 20-foot setbacks between each one. So I think the concern is that the intent of R1s is to have the single-family residential traditional neighborhood experience.
Right.
And the PUD process may be a way around that.
Right.
Should a planning commission and a city council approve it, of course.
Okay, so if this passes, what does it look like in the future? I'm hearing.
I don't see that there's a variance. I don't see that there would be anything.
Yeah, I don't think, are you sure the condos work that way? Because, I mean, an apartment building is owned by one person and they're all rented out. How is a condo?
We've got, it's interesting that we're discussing this because I'm having a few issues right now with out in town where people wanting to put additions onto condos, but they don't have proper coverage. They don't have proper setbacks. But yet there was an approved subdivision 20 years ago.
Right.
You know, and they're fee simple held properties that, or they're required then to meet the requirement, the setback requirements, the bulk controls. So I see this as possibly an end around where somebody can come in, build a condo project. They're all fee simple. They own the whole project and then they run each one of them out, which obviously they're allowed to do. I'm just, I agree with Paul. The intent is single-family houses. I think it just maybe needs to be a little bit more defined, that it states that we actually define what a single family. And that if somebody wants to build a condo project, we might have to, it should say in there that that would still have to go PUD. Probably saying is it wouldn't be allowed.
Right. Well, see, I'm wondering if it's not, if PUD, we may need to, you know, maybe there's another one that we needed to develop as well and there's a mixed-use one, per se. And PUD just means, you know, it needs to be revised. So it's really just setbacks and bulk controls that are sort of flexible and not the actual uses are still what are dictated by code, by the other, each zone. It's not a typical way to PUD. I guess I just hate to, I mean, I understand the exclusion is because of the, what Paul was describing, you know, trying to preserve kind of the traditional, single-family, one house, one family per lot.
There's the words. You make it per.
Yeah, that's what.
City lot.
One residence, it doesn't matter if it's rented.
Must meet city code requirements and it can't be a condo fee simple type lot. That would exclude that sort of thing from happening. Unless we want that sort of thing to happen.
Well, that's, I'm trying to get at what council wants to happen. I think that's what it is, is they want one.
Well, yeah, council member, I think Nancy Bane spoke to, this is Chris Paul, talked about protecting the integrity of those existing neighborhoods and.
So the PUD would still allow for variations in the setbacks, but it'd still be just, if it's in an R1, it'd still just be one house. It might be in a different place than any other house.
PUD at that point, so it'd just be a variance.
That's what, exactly. That's what I'm wondering.
That's my interpretation.
What was that?
That it excludes. PUDs would, plan unit develops could not occur in R1.
See, I think we should say that.
Way to put it.
Yeah, rather than this, this way, just say uses permitted and then there should be another section added and just say, you know, exceptions or exclusions, PUD is not , is excluded in R1. And it might actually just need to go into, would it be in the PUD or would it really just go into Title 23 in R1?
This is under Title 21 subdivisions for non-plan unit development.
Yeah. Okay, let's look at 210908. You have copies of PUDs in there. Special PUD lot requirements. Upon recommendation by the planning commission through the city council by majority, three-fourths vote, lot requirement for PUD approved by the commission may vary from any requirements from the area which PUD is located. A, lot with setback yard requirements may vary to accommodate variety of structural patterns, clustering designs, housing types. B, lot area per dwelling unit requirement may be the same as in a district which is located, but may not be reduced more than 20 percent. C, more than one building is permitted on residential tracts or lots in such zones held by one owner or common ownership. Any deed restrictions such PUD must be included in the application. And D, of course, is all, all other standards residential district located R1 must be R1, R2, R3.
Well, they'd have to correct that point if R1 would not remain in there, so.
As well as the fact that you have more than one building on a residential tract. C. So there's, and then what I was looking for when I ran across that is I'm looking for the variance part in here. How do you get a variance in place? And the variance portion may actually be in the general subdivision regs outside the PUD chapter section. And again, this is, I'm trying to wrap my head around what this means when we do this. So when this gets approved by council. I could see where it will preserve neighborhoods. It might be a workaround though that may even be a little bit different than what they want to have and we want to have.
Right. So that way, if someone does want to develop a PUD in an R1, they would have to request a zoning change.
Yes. Yeah, that would slow it down.
Request a zoning change?
Say Hickory was, say this change was made in the Hickory development. It's R1 there. You would have to request a change to make it at least R2. And then we'd be looking at it a case-by-case basis and you may say, well, yeah, you're really sort of shut off from the R1s in that space.
And the zoning change would actually require, again, public hearing.
So does it?
Our approval, council, public hearing.
Right. So it seems like if that's the goal, would definitely slow any development of the PUDs in R1s.
210904, uses permitted in a PUD. Just put another paragraph in there.
That's what I'm, right.
Put another paragraph in there. PUDs are not permissible in an R1.
Well, I almost wonder, is it just a different, a section added or something?
That option, though, to be able to request a zone change would give some flexibility if you're looking at those fringe areas.
Right.
Where something like the Hickory project might actually make more sense because of its proximity and locale.
But the burden, I guess, would be on the developer wanting.
Yeah.
Would have to like to.
Well, I, you know, basically, my marching orders were, will planning commission please review and discuss?
We have.
But I think they can proceed without us.
Oh, yeah.
If they choose to.
They can't, yeah. I mean, I don't know. Does anyone else have reservations about? I mean, I think that's, they need to, if they want that, it should be an exclusion. The R1 is excluded rather than the draft that you provided with the only single-family residences are permitted in R1 zone. Sort of suggests you can do a PUD as long as it's single-family residences. Then it gets into the debate about what's a single-family residence.
Okay, so.
I would suggest they do it as an exclusion.
And I assume that somewhere along, we probably have to look at that definition of single-family residence. What does that actually mean? What, you know, condos, et cetera?
So we can, I guess, do a memo to the city council.
And that memo would be?
I would suggest not amending the uses permitted in a PUD and instead create an exclusion, a section in the PUDs that zones excluded. And in that zones excluded, I would list the exception being R1 zone. And that's it.
Good. What are the, if we're strengthening the R1, what implications does that have then for the proposed rezoning on East State as far as the R2? Because at that point, it seems to me as though strengthening the R1 is giving, for instance, the neighborhood in East State more protection, but at the same time, you know, are we talking about them going along and reducing the amount of R2 space that's available? Again, you know, based on the discussion we had at the last meeting, where does R2 fit then?
Are you segueing in here?
It's not a bad idea, I mean, if we're talking.
Right.
And tell you something, I was contemplating that Central Ameris Street used to be R2. It was down to R1. I know when I read this, when I moved the plan unit development section from the zoning code to the subdivision regs, and I read that section where they could pretty much be in any zone, R1, 2, and 3, I was, I was sitting out in the audience there upset about it. And I have to agree. It's kind of scary when you think somebody could drop something in. So we are strengthening the R1s on that side. But segueing to what you're talking about, about the R2s, though, I think Paul did some studies on this and this stuff, so I suggest he bring us up to date on something.
What's, yeah, let's proceed into that discussion on the rezoning request for Northeast State Street. Go ahead.
I just ran a few numbers using the city's GIS, I think, just to kind of look at the amount of R2 that we have in the city right now. There's three R2 locations. The one is the Jacob Street in South that we've been discussing for the last few months. There's also one towards, within, you know, slightly west of Uptown Athens, off-campus student rental area. That also includes the West State Street Cemetery. It's actually zoned R2. And then on the south side, there's a small area where Nottingham is. And that's it. Those are the only three sections we have left in town that are still zoned R2. Kind of looking into it a little bit more, the request that was issued by the, for that neighborhood in it, they state that there's 113 residential structures in that existing R2 with nine of them being used as two-family residences. I didn't double-check that by driving around and double-checking or counting each one, but I presume that that's more or less accurate. Using GIS, I did double-check the off-campus student area near downtown. I calculated that there's approximately 83 residential structures in that zone with roughly 24 of them being duplexes. And then for that Nottingham area on the south side, there's five residential structures there and none are duplexes. They're all single-family homes. So basically, we have about 35 R2 duplexes in all R2 zones. We have almost 200 structures in them, I think is what I counted. There's also about 360 parcels in the R2 with that Far East Side neighborhood having roughly 175 of them. So the downzoning, you know, if that's to move forward, it would effectively eliminate about half of the remaining R2. And now we've done that several times in the past, though. We've effectively, within the last 20 years, we've probably cut our R2 already in half with some downzonings. So it's nothing that we haven't done in the past, but I guess, you know, to me, I'm not saying whether we should or should not do it based on that, but the question that comes in my mind is, you know, is R2 a worthwhile zoning in the city? If so, where does it go? We don't have much duplex in the city. There are some duplexes in our R1s and there are some in the R3s as well. So there's others out there, but I'm just not sure the right answer to that. Now, again, that downzoning from R2 to R1, it's clear that most of that neighborhood is, is single-family residential. It appears as if there is an interest from a lot of people in that neighborhood to see that downzoning happen and they, it would impact their specific property because the, and that is an award or a variance, excuse me, that's a rezoning that has happened several times in the city past. So, again, I don't, I'm not sure whether it's right or wrong, but the question to me is, does the R2 have a use anymore in the city? In that Nottingham area, again, it's, there's five homes there and it's, there's pretty, the topography, the topography in that Nottingham area is pretty challenging. So I don't even know if we'd see much, the use of having that zoned R2, period.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see a big need in the city for R2 if you consider R3 allows duplexes and multifamily and multifamily.
Right.
I mean, all the R2 does is a lot of mix.
It limits it, yeah.
Yeah. Of, you know, one or two. So it just doesn't seem like, you know, I mean, if this were a Chicago or a place that had this sort of duplex bungalows that were developed en masse, I would see a much more of a need on preserving an R2, but Athens just wasn't sort of developed that way and the housing stock has been converted into duplexes. So I don't see a big need to at least keep it in this area. It might be something for the commission to consider as a whole as well. Go ahead, Mayor.
I just, okay, two things are going on here. One is, I don't know how R2 duplexes actually form and have progressed over time. I mean, we have a bunch of grandfather ones over on the Central Avenue. I think there's one on the corner there that's all rental. I have two actually adjacent to me where the homeowner lives in what, you know, the upstairs part and the downstairs is the rental. Whether that's something that's going to actually spring up, you know, Paul over here was talking about the Nottingham area. Is it economically feasible for somebody to build a new duplex these days? I don't, I don't know if the finances are there. So therefore, I'm not worried about it becoming a real loss if we make an endangered species in the city of R2s. On the other hand, I remember many years ago, there was a push to get rid of the B1s, about 10, 12, 15 years ago, maybe. And I know the converse of that is now, most people would like to see B1s in there because they like the neighborhood store concept, whether it's Mistrada's down on the west side or Village Bakery on the east side.
I agree. I mean, I think there is a need for more, you know, B1s. And the thing is, I mean, the nature of the B1 should be small. Like, they shouldn't be big swaths within a neighborhood, you know, they should be confined to, you know, intersections and.
I guess what I'm wondering is, is there, again, I'm not sure what makes the mindset for a duplex. You know, I tried playing out the scenarios when we started this conversation, saying, okay, somebody wants to build a house and, you know, I don't know what the numbers are when you build a duplex versus a single-family, but if you're trying to offset your mortgage payment, this is the way to do it. Is that, is that really what is happening anymore? You know, again, I don't, I hear the desire to get rid of them all here.
Right.
And again, we're going to knock out half of them in the city. And again, I know we knocked out a good portion already, so, you know. It's just, I just bring it up as a point of view. Again, I go through that neighborhood and I look at that neighborhood and what the area we're talking about is a very narrow range there. I mean, basically between Jacob and East State Street, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't take long before you're, you're out of the commercial district real quick and you're into that neighborhood flavor. And I understand we don't have sidewalks there. We don't have the intensification, we don't have the ability to intensify the use there as well. So I just bring it up because I know the philosophy for the B1s, they would have been, if they kept going ahead with it, there wouldn't be any at all at this, at that point. Or anything that was in the B1s would have been grandfathered in and an endangered species there.
Right.
And there aren't that many there, too, you can see. The biggest one right now is the new one at University Estates, I believe, the blue up there.
If there's not that big a difference, then what's the need to eliminate it?
Which, the B1s at the time?
No, the R2s.
No, R2s. Preservation of the neighborhood. I think they're worried about, you know, well, first of all, look at the PUD law right now. I mean, it's, this is going to change and it will enable somebody to drop something fairly large in there. Two is they're feeling the intensification of development, I guess.
Well, so I guess then it does, there is a push then to develop this, this remaining R2 then, or the request wouldn't be made.
Or the possibility exists.
Right.
And you're right. It actually seems to correlate with this whole request to look at the PUDs as not being allowed in R1, which would present that from occurring in this neighborhood.
And we have several proposals out there. One is a shrinking of R2s but keeping them. Your proposal at one point of eliminating entirely.
Right.
And adding a section of.
B3 along East State Street.
Did you share with you the research yet that you had on the Utah Strathmore parcels?
Other than the email I sent to the planning commission yesterday now, but the, somebody mentioned to me that they were under the impression that those corner lots at Utah and Strathmore, that at the last meeting, it was discussed to actually upzone that to B3. I was told that they, they might be deed restricted only for residential use. And so yesterday afternoon, or yesterday morning, I did some research using the county recorder's deeds and their books and volumes and can confirm. recorder's deeds and their books and volumes and can confirm that at least four of those parcels are deed restricted so that commercial use could, cannot happen on them regardless of our zoning.
You couldn't even rent, so it had to be a private...
It's private residential use and I guess that's up to debate, I would, as to what that means.
You have borders, right?
Yeah.
You have borders?
Excuse me?
You could have borders in the house?
That I don't know. Yeah, it says private residential purposes.
Yeah.
The deeds were written, the restrictions are in place since at least the 1940, I found one with a date from 1940. I don't think our zoning code was even created until the 1950s. So, and deed restrictions do run with the land. So regardless of transfer of ownership or zoning, a commercial endeavor on those parcels is a moot point. So...
A lot of history here that we don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
Some long-term visioning was occurring at that point.
Yeah, my guess would be that, you know, at that time, they were probably larger lots.
That's right.
It might have been the old farm lot and mom and dad wanted to split them up and give them off to the children, but at the same time, they were thinking they wanted to, they might have been thinking they wanted their farm to be preserved and other, that nature. And so they reduced it so that they could only live on those lands and they couldn't create a commercial opportunity on it. It was, I think, the state route back then even.
Right.
And so...
Yeah, it's hard to quite figure out as well because I did this, once you told me how to do it, I did this similar research and they seemed to like, the deeds that you found kind of leapfrog lots. So you have to figure, well, even though I'm not finding a deed, there's probably no reason that, because the language is exactly the same on the deeds regardless of what year the deed was created.
Sometimes we rewrite the deed restrictions just to keep...
With each sale.
To make it simpler for title search, title agents to find that information.
So you got to suspect that. But I didn't find it beyond Strathmore or Utah in the spot checks I did as well.
I didn't see any beyond that, but I did a very casual search of other parcels there. It's also possible that there is, Ohio University may have owned that, the south side of East State back then too. And the deed restrictions were there because they were concerned about the airport expanding or encroachment on that neighborhood. That's such a long time ago, it's hard to guess.
Yeah, it does, before the meeting started, Mayor and I were just discussing, it does make you wonder some of the ones that are currently B3, if they're, are ready or deeded and not to be commercial and already are commercial.
Yeah.
Who looked at them, I mean, 20 years ago and...
It should surface anytime there's a trans, a sale.
Right.
A title, a title search should bring that information up there and, you know, if you've got a use on a parcel that runs counter to a deed restriction, a mortgage company won't give you financing, you won't be able to get clear title.
Right.
And so I would presume that that's not the case, but it's, it's possible.
Yeah, I did go as far, I couldn't find any on the lots that faced or that fronted East State Street. So even though four on Utah had the deed restriction, I didn't find any on two, for example. But again, it's one of those, it's hard to believe that it weren't.
Yeah.
So I don't know how, if, before any zoning change occurs, if, who do, it can't be you obviously that has to do this research. I mean, you know, can we request the county to do this before?
I don't think so. You'd have to hire a title attorney to do title searches and to certify that. From my perspective, that's not the city's concern, really. Again, there's nothing to say you can't zone that B3.
Right.
But what happens, if you zone the B3, you can't develop it as B3 or as any commercial use because there's a deed restriction. And so that's, to me, again, it's, our zoning doesn't matter in that situation. If your deed restriction runs counter to zoning, that you don't have that, it doesn't intensify your use. I can't just go and have an R1 property and put a deed restriction on there that's saying, Mike, this parcel can only be used for a commercial purpose.
Right.
And that, that doesn't give me the authority to use it for a commercial use because the city would say it doesn't meet zoning. However, if I, if I sell that piece of land, it would now restrict you from actually building a house on it. Because, so you're basically, you just have a lot sitting there that can't be used. So I don't think we need to double-check all 360 parcels. I guess I'd say if we're going to double-check those, then we might as well do title searches for every parcel within the city limits and that's, you're talking $100,000 project.
I understand, I mean, I understand, but it's, at the same time, I don't want to, I mean, we want planning to actually create a picture of what the city's going to look like, not just a picture.
Right, right.
So...
I would like the consideration for that B3 zoning, Strathmore, Utah removed. I mean, based on these deed restrictions and what's existing there.
Yeah, but I think it's, I think it runs deeper than that.
You'd say, oh, the restrictions, you mean?
Yeah. I mean, I think we're, we're just not turning up with some, because there, a lot of these I found, they just, they weren't sales.
Yeah.
They've just been such long times, so therefore, there's no deed that's been revised in the record.
When I was informed of this, I was told specifically the corners.
Okay.
Okay. And that's my understanding is that when this was zoned initially, that's why it wasn't zoned for business in the first place.
Does that include that vacant lot next to the Napa or the Citibank?
No, that one's still right here, that's a B3.
Is that at the corner of Strathmore and State?
It would make it part of the corner, so...
I couldn't find a deed that said, that had a restriction on it, okay. Again, there may be more out there. I found four. There could be several more, but I don't have a good answer on that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with taking Strathmore and Utah lots out of this sort of equation on the B3. I mean, if you look at the comprehensive plan, I can't remember if it was included in this packet and I copied the page with me, but it's left here. Here is, it looks like...
They've been transferred several times.
I know we're all, you know, referencing the comprehensive plan and we have the comprehensive plan review, whatever, 10 years out or what have you in the present, which really encouraged us to seriously review and revisit the comprehensive plan generally anyway.
Yes. Well, I'm sorry, I don't have it with me and we can sit table that discussion later, but it does, comprehensive plan does rezone all this R1 to one, one zone, except for it leaves the B3, a section of B3 at the front. So similar to what I proposed, except Strathmore and Utah would still be, or would go to R1 and not B3 at the East State Street there.
The plan doesn't actually provide a zoning map.
No, is it just...
I don't believe, to make the recommendation for a downzoning, it does, it discusses the, you know, from the process that it should be what they, the plan describes it as a neighborhood conservation area. Doesn't get into specifics with that, but it's clearly single-family residential. So to me, what the plan's saying is, we need to conserve single-family residential in this neighborhood. It talks about adding sidewalks and issues like that and, but I don't, I don't see anywhere in there, from what I could find, that says downzone this from R2 to R1. However, if the plan says it should be a neighborhood conservation area and to preserve that owner-occupied feel to it, it seems that the downzoning is a means to achieve that goal.
Here's one other item I'm going to bring up. And this has been, you know, through my walks through the neighborhood and we've brought this up time and again, predominantly, except for, you know, you have exceptions, obviously, but predominantly, it's one and a half story dwellings. There's very few two-story, at least from the street front in this neighborhood. R1, you can have, what is it, three and a half stories?
I think so.
So it doesn't really look at a per-neighborhood basis.
Right.
It just looks at it as a sort of city overall. And this might be, the gentleman that made the request, it might be something that you can answer. Is it just the single-family nature that residents in this neighborhood are looking at preserving, or is it actually the character of the house? Because, I mean, right now, you could, you know, a homeowner could knock it down and raise it up and be next to a bunch of, and that's what you find with a few of the exceptions in there where there are much larger properties that don't, don't fit the height at all of what the neighborhood is, perfectly allowed by the R1 zoning though.
Yeah, I think it's the single-family nature of the neighborhood that we're trying to preserve. Like, again, I can only speak for myself, you know, I can't speak for everybody. I have heard some concern from other people about the, the nature of some of the duplexes that are already there. They're sort of boxy and have big parking pads that take up the entire backyard and they're unattractive in that sense. But, you know, from my perspective, it would be the single-family nature of the neighborhood that we're trying to preserve.
Okay.
And again, there, there are only nine duplexes there currently and there are close to 100 single-family residences in the area that's currently zoned R2.
Right.
Is the, is there a concern as well? In the late 90s and in the past decade, there was this, this movement towards what were commonly called like a McMansion. You would see people buying up a neighborhood which, like, old-style bungalows and one and a half story homes and tearing down a home that might have been there for 60 or 70 years and rebuilding with a massive single-family home. And if you've got 10 homes on a street that are all of a similar nature, one and a half stories or Cape Cod's, and then you put two or three of those in there, the, the nature of your single-family residential zone is significantly changed. And for some people, they might say that's for the worse because of the impact of those homes and the scale of them.
I understand what you're saying. And I haven't heard that concern from everybody, from anybody. I haven't thought of it myself until you just brought it up. But, but I would think that that would still be allowed even in an R2 zone.
That's true, yeah.
And that the danger of a, of a duplex coming up, you know, having a two-story sort of boxy nature and paving the entire yard would be worse, that would be more of a threat than what you're describing.
That's true, yeah.
Right. Well, I mean, I think I'm looking at going a step beyond and like not at saying, all right, it's R1, but maybe it's, it's R1.5. And R1.5 says, any new building can only be one and a half stories unless the adjacent building is, you know, bigger. And that way, you're not getting a piecemeal, here's a big, here's all of a sudden a big one next to all these ranches. It's like, well, here's, there's already a place that's three and a half stories. That lot next to it can at least go up to that height, so I don't know. And it might be, again, it might not be a concern, but I just, we make this change and then everyone's like, wow, it's just, you know, maybe it might actually create more of a, where people are like, are attracted to the neighborhood and want to develop some builds, I don't know.
And again, I haven't thought too much about what you're saying and right offhand, R2 zoning as it exists would, would allow that anyway. So, so you're proposing some kind of a new restriction even on, on an R1 if it happens to have mostly single-story structures, you would want to enforce that. That's a new restriction that I didn't think of until this moment and, you know, so I don't have an opinion on it, yeah.
That's fine. I mean, it's something I'd be interested, you know, if you talk to the Neighborhood Association and other people, I'd hope to make this request. It's something I'd very much be interested in.
Yeah, and as this process goes forward, I assume there's going to be hearings and, you know, to hear from the other people that, you know, that live in this zone as well.
Again, was, I think this was a discussion some time back about our zones, how they're very generic. When you talk about B3s in terms of, you know, how it's Stimson versus East State Street in terms of structure. And part of the comprehensive plan, if I remember, was talking about trying to get a location, zoning within locations in terms of the ambiance of a B3 here versus B3 there. Same thing could apply with R1s too.
Right.
Which is what you're talking about.
That's exactly what I'm trying to get at.
The tone of the neighborhoods. So, you know, and again, right now, we don't restrict that type of stuff. I think a lot of restrictions of the 60% rule would stop some of it, but you could, as I say, you build up three.
Right. And I mean, I think one of the things we're trying to encourage is building up. I mean, I think one of the things of doing the 60%, even though most development can occur as it is, just a little bit better with the 60% lot coverage. But, you know, some people might just see that, well, we'll just, we'll build up higher. And I guess we don't want to prevent, you know, we want to encourage development, but do it in a, you know, systematic way, fashion.
Quite enough, when, I know the houses you're speaking about, when they were built and then a neighbor that was upset a few years later, that neighbor then did the same thing, built up. And I have a lady friend who lives in that neighborhood, that their backyard neighbor was able to obtain a permit to build up, which almost completely shaded their backyard.
Right.
I mean, it was just, it was a remarkable change.
Yes, I think it's something to look at and we, when we go, and again, we can do the rezoning to R1 and then maybe we, or, you know, or whatever it is that's determined and we don't put those sort of, you know, items or restriction into it, but then we take a better look then at our R1s, at our B3s and get a sense of, do they need to be divvied up into a separate zone? So R2 may come back in, it may just not be what the R2 that we know today.
So really, the next step I see is that we, we have several proposals here. The one I'm hearing the most of, of course, is our, the elimination of R2s entirely. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what I'm hearing.
Okay. And I think...
If I may, I put together a plat map of all the different properties out there that would maybe help us adjust where the B3 line should go in relation to continuous, meticulous ownership of where existing buildings are at. Some of the ones that you recommended decreasing are right through the middle of existing B3 buildings. And then there's a couple others that are parking lots that are in the R2s that are attached to B3s, that maybe those should become B3s. And we made some notes on it here. Then you might find a little area of a pocket that may remain a B2, kind of in between the R2.
That's what I was thinking. It seemed like there are, there's ample opportunity for a B2 in this neighborhood.
I meant an R2.
No, I'm saying B2. I feel like at, like Grand and Avon, there's opportunity to develop B2 where, you know, there's parking lots where the dealerships are, you know, like a Larry Shae or something like that, where they aren't going to be redeveloped as a dealership then.
It's here if you want to take a look at it, so.
Okay. Well, I would suggest if we put together a session or sort of a committee outside of the commission that works on that, because, I mean, some of that is sort of workshop-based that might be difficult to do in a, you know, sort of hearing setting like this.
These two have already done quite a bit already.
Do we want to have like an evening meeting? I think at the last meeting, you guys had discussed that.
Yeah.
Community center and...
This would be a meeting, not the actual public hearing.
Not a public hearing, it would just, yeah, and it could even be a regular meeting of the planning commission and just kind of a forum where residents and property owners in that neighborhood can, you know, we could get push pins and all that and they could say where they live and, you know, what kind of zoning that they would like to see or what their desires are so we can hear from a pretty broad spectrum of residential, as well as we could, you know, work with the chamber to get some of the property owners in the B3 zones to come and hear their input. If you guys wanted to do that as a regular meeting on a Wednesday, the most logical date would probably be Wednesday, November 16th. The weekend after that is Thanksgiving and then we're getting into December and all the way into January. And again, it wouldn't be a public hearing, so we could, that'll be your second meeting in November. I could, I'd try to put in a call to Rich Campitelli just conditionally to see if they had a room open. I haven't heard back from him yet, but we could do that.
Would that be at noon or would that be in the evening?
That's because we got...
Yeah, good. All right.
Not sure of the time, but probably, you know, 6:00 or 7:00 PM.
All right. Is this something, Paul, you would mind running this sort of a charrette-like thing?
I could...
Get into it?
I hadn't planned to get, I don't think I have enough time to really get into a charrette on it, but, you know, the planning commission has a specific, if you've got a template or form that you'd like to do, you know, we can try to put that all together. I haven't really thought much about it at this point.
Well, I'll put some thought into it as well. I mean, we have some time to plan it, but I think if we can just hold that date.
Yeah, I guess the question as to the date.
Right.
You know, if you want, if we do it after that, then it's, Ohio University's on break and a lot of people that live in that neighborhood may even be out of town for traveling or vacations or something.
If you can't get that Wednesday, do, should we think about moving our, have an extra meeting or just move a regularly scheduled... or just move a regular scheduled meeting to a Tuesday or Thursday or something like that? I don't, I'm just asking. I don't know what is scheduled as the community center.
I mean, I'm, it's an evening meeting, so I don't think it matters as much, the date. And I, just get back to the email to commission and we'll, we'll get back to you what works, what doesn't.
And we have quite a bit of data already. We have several maps generated. We have, obviously, the map with the property owners there. We do need to get some input, I imagine, from the businesses on the, on the streets, see what they're thinking.
We haven't really delved into that, you know, what does it mean when our plan recommends a neighborhood conservation area? It would be interesting just to, you know, if we get a decent crowd to say, what does that actually mean to you? And how does, what do you think about that? I think that would be useful to get that feedback.
Well, you gotta imagine, I mean, if it's a neighborhood conservation area, that there's sort of nodes in there that we're not even, you know, right now, I think we're looking at this as a residential specifically, but you gotta imagine that people entering that neighborhood, you know, LaRiche, the actual buildings that have been there for so long, that that's, you know, part of people's mental image of that neighborhood as well.
Because there is always, there's an opportunity, you know, we could, if a neighborhood was interested, there's, you could conceivably create an overlay zone that does have specific zoning requirements for any zone.
Right. That's a good point.
To really address, you know, neighborhood conservation. And if it's saying, we don't want massive homes in our, massive single-family homes, we like the traditional story and a half or something.
Couldn't you do that with duplexes then and restrict the quantity of duplexes?
You could, certainly. You could do that with anything, yeah.
Which is the big concern that, you know, I've heard up here. Again, you know, my biggest concern is eliminating housing alternatives within the city limits. And I don't think there's a lot of it. And so that, that's my biggest concern about when we talk about elimination of the R2.
So what would the overlay zone look like for an R2? Are you talking about height requirements or density requirements?
Raisin, yeah.
I mean, I'm just throwing it out there. I don't have any idea.
You know, talk about, you know, there's, you know, I know from experience, there's parents who've talked about the idea, hey, I'd love to, you know, have a house or a place next to my daughter, next to my son, something like that. Fine, so you restrict the density, you restrict the height. You know, I spoke again with somebody who is a employee here in the city and they're married and with one child. They have to leave for whatever reason their, their particular housing at this point. And looking for something right now is almost impossible for them within the city. They have to look outside the city. And one of the things I, you know, I really have a problem with about Athens at this point is how a number of people are trying to treat this community like it's a gated community. And it's not. And, you know, I wanna make sure that there's flexibility, you know, when you talk about the comprehensive plan and, you know, talking about eliminating the parking in the front and putting it in the back. Well, again, that's just one of the contradictions of the comprehensive plan in my mind because then, you know, residents complain that, well, now I've got a big parking lot that I'm living next to. So people didn't think about that. So, you know, before we just, you know, do this casual elimination of the, of the R2, you know, I really would like us to explore, you know, what the housing alternatives are for people who don't, again, who can't afford owner-occupied housing and at the same time, don't wanna live in what we consider strictly or primarily student housing. People who are young adults, who are raising families, you know, what about them? We just can't keep pushing those people off into Coolville or Stewart or, or, you know, places like that. They, they need to be able to have access to some housing within the city as well.
Well, I guess this is why we're having, talking about having a public meeting on this, a meeting at least to get more information. We're not just jumping into this. And, and again, a lot of the changes that occurred with the R2s is to downzoning. A lot of the parking requirements is in response to the rental market, student rental market in particular, but the rental market in general. You know, I've had discussions with people, say, the market's soft out there. There's lots of houses for sale out there. They're not turning over. Is it, and to me, is it the price? Is it the housing structure? Is it where they live? Is it, you know, there's, I talked to somebody on the far east side who's, who's moving. They basically have their parents move, live three blocks down, five blocks down. But, you know, they wanna get to, get closer, but they don't wanna be in the same house. So does a duplex mix that? And it sounds like it wouldn't work because they want the, you know, their parents want nice and quiet. So they're talking about moving out of the city, out of the city for the, so they can have two houses on one lot. Okay? That's prohibited in the city.
Well, I mean, you could see where the, you know, if you had an overlay in there that duplexes, say, you preserve the R2 and the overlay just, you know, the one and a half stories. I mean, I think right now the duplexes are so out of character in that neighborhood, you know, just based on their boxy appearance and they're two stories in a neighborhood that's typically one and a half, that if they might be able to develop a duplex, you might not be even aware that it is one.
Your box duplexes are out of character, but there are duplexes that may have first floor residential, basement residential.
Yeah, my next-door neighbor.
And they don't even realize there are duplexes by looking at it.
Right, right. So it is possible, and I think it's just, again, maybe it's, we need to look at the overlay because it might be more the neighborhood character that we are also trying to preserve. But that's why I think it's great to open it up to a public discussion.
But be aware, when we start talking about historic districts on the East State Street area, the biggest concern is you're gonna put restrictions on what I can do with my house at that point, you know? I mean, we're, now we're talking about trying to, you know, put an overlay for actually structures and uses of houses without any historic. I don't think this could be considered a historic district, could it? It's not there yet, is it?
Anything older than fifty years old is technically eligible based, you know, you've gotta prove it. But fifty years, I think, is the threshold.
Okay.
So a lot of these homes would be.
They're a terrible historic district.
There's a few over on, on Strathmore. There's that one that's like an Old English manor style.
Yeah.
It's an absolutely gorgeous home. I suppose that would, that's the only one that really comes to mind immediately. But there is a pretty nice attractive variety of housing styles in that neighborhood, similar to what we've got on Lake Sunnyside and Elmwood.
Yeah.
And that East State neighborhood. And that was one of the arguments as to why that neighborhood should have been, was eligible and why it was, became a nationally registered historic district was because of the variety of the architectural home styles from the thirties and forties that were evident there.
But you know as well as I, the concern is, oh, now, now we're gonna be dictated to.
Right, which is inaccurate.
Yeah.
Completely inaccurate.
Okay, but when we talk about overlays of, you know, one-story duplexes, that, without, without any historic precedent to do that.
Which I think is, that's why we, you know, have some public meetings and really, and hear what the people that live and own real estate in that neighborhood think about those ideas, you know?
And I just bringing it up from my personal experience, I don't, no one's brought that to my attention. And that's why I just wanna see if it is something that's out there or not.
Well, it's good discussion here.
Yeah. All right. Well, I don't wanna keep, I know everyone has other duties that they need to attend to. So let's get back with Paul and find out when, if we can meet on that Wednesday. And if that's the case, we'll sort of start planning this public meeting. All our meetings are public, but more of a workshop as opposed to a sort of a hearing setting. Any other discussion? All right. I'm Portman, City Planner and Director of Development and Co. enforcement.
Just one item. Just, I'll be, tomorrow and Friday, I'll be in Dayton for the statewide planning, chapter of the American Planning Association, their biannual conference. I'll be in Dayton for that. If there's anything really interesting, I'll make sure to report it back to the planning commission. That's all I've got.
Yeah, thank you.
All I have is that the BZA meeting last week was reduced down to one case for 125 Franklin requesting a parking variance, which was denied. There were many people in opposition to the request, so. And then all the other cases that were on the agenda have been moved to November. And at the next meeting, I'll give you the full slate on that. We do have a full slate for November.
What was the request for the park?
Three, two all-street, well, requirement is for three parking spaces and LA had one. There's a second one that's, we don't know. They're gonna have to get a survey to prove whether it entirely fits on the property or not. Our best guess, measurements indicate that it goes into the right-of-way finale. So we were not able to legally count that space as a parking space. So that's where it's at. If they can justify that that one does beat code, then come back requesting for a two-bedroom, for a two-person rental, then they can do so. But.
Is it existing building now?
Yes, it's an existing house. So the onus is on them to prove that second spot as it sits.
Okay. Anything else?
That is it.
All right, thank you, Beth. Skip the opportunity for citizens to speak.
I know.
Well done.
We have a way. That's, yeah, that's what's another business. Our next meeting is still scheduled for November 2nd, 2017, at noon in the same meeting hall. It is the November 16th meeting that we're discussing possibly moving the location in time and potentially the date. But for now, it's still on from November 16th. Any other business? All right, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.